Okay, it's 2:00. And I would like to call the order today at the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, August 4th, 2016. And ask Brett, if you would please provide the invitation for us.
You bet. By with me, please. Yeah, we're very thankful for you. We're thankful for this college and these leaders. We pray for them. We thank you. Please bless them and their families for their time they spend away from them. Thank you for all the students that are coming to register and get ready for a wonderful semester. We thank you for the history and heritage and for what's coming in the future for Weatherford College. Thank you very much. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Item number two is open forum for individuals not on the agenda. Did we everybody sign up? Okay. Move on to item number three. President of the Board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have a few short updates and recognitions. I'd first like to give an enrollment update. Our total enrollment for the two summer sessions was down about 2.5% over last year. However, our contact hours were actually up 1.3%, which was encouraging. Once again, we attribute the decline in enrollment to the strong job market. As we've talked about before, as the economy improves, community college enrollment drops. As the economy gets worse, community college enrollment typically increases. So, we're happy to have a strong economy, but at the same time, we'd like to see our enrollments go up a little bit. It appears that the enrollment statewide at the mid-sides and small colleges seem to be down pretty much across the board. We're hoping that we have a few more weeks left in enrollment before the fall, and we're hoping our numbers will come up a little bit. But we are projecting to have a slight decrease in enrollment this fall. For recognitions, as you know, Dr. Bowers is retiring and Kathy Bashen is also retiring. So, we're going to miss them greatly, but we are going to have some replacements. And I wanted to talk about the individuals, and both of them were instrumental in helping us select for our replacements. And the first one will be for Dr. Bowers. We are going to have Mike Indy, who is currently an executive dean. Mike will be taking over as vice president of Instruction and Student Services. So, I just wanted to introduce y'all to Mike, if you haven't met Mike before. And Kathy's replacement is going to be Adam Finley. And Adam is currently associate dean, I believe, in our student services department, and he will be taking over as executive dean. When Kathy retires, I know that Richard and Kathy have been working to get these guys up to speed so that when they do retire, that, you know, we'll have a seamless transition. I know they've done a great job, and I appreciate everything you've done. And I know Kathy is talking about wanting to come back maybe and do some contractual stuff with us to help us on some of our other issues that we have. So, we're excited about that. And hopefully, Richard will want to come back and do some stuff down the road with us as well.
We'd like to see.
That would be great. The other change that we have that I wanted to talk to you about, as many of you know, Andra has been working on her doctoral degree, and she is one chapter away from completing her dissertation, which for those of you in here that have done a dissertation, you know that that's quite a feat. Andra is going to be taking over our human resources supervision next year, and she's also going to be taking over our athletic department supervision. And we have changed her title from vice president to executive vice president. So, that will go into effect September the 1st. So, I just want y'all to know that. So, congratulations to everybody that's gotten a new position, and congratulations to your title. Enjoy retirement.
I'm planning on it.
I have plans on it, too. Why didn't see Pat there?
I see you. I would also like to recognize Matt Joyner. Is Matt here today? Matt's not here today. I wanted to recognize Matt Joyner. He was just hired by North Central Texas College as their dean of distance learning. Is that the correct title?
Yes.
Mike, dean of distance learning. And I know Matt's done a great job running our Wise County campus, and he'll be greatly missed. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that he did get a promotion, and we are going to miss Matt. I'd also like to recognize Johnny Emmons and the Weatherford College rodeo team for a historic season. Cole Wheeler, Casey Two, Lane Livingston, Aspen Dent, and Landon Williams represented Weatherford College at this year's college national finals rodeo. Our men amassed 525 points, placing Weatherford College in fourth place as a team, the highest placement in school history. Cole Wheeler also topped the week off by winning the national championship in team roping with his partner from Ranger College, Wesley Thorpe. Casey Two became the first coyote in college history to appear in three straight national finals rodeo. Likewise, Lane Livingston and Aspen Dent both won the Southwest Regional All Around Championship, a first for Weatherford College. Congratulations to all of these individuals on a job well done. I'd like to recognize Coach Jeff Lightfoot and his baseball team for receiving the national recognition for outstanding academic achievement. The team had a 3.114 grade point average, which clearly demonstrates the commitment our program has to our student athletes' educational success. Congratulations on a job well done. Employee notices. DMAC local requires the college president to find the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Carla Kreider, Bill Palmer, Glenn Schlay, Doc Ballard, Jackie Bennett, and Brandy Bott. EFCD local policy requires the college president to report annually to the board concerning the GED testing center, including the number of tests administered and the fees received. In 2016, for July, we had 250 GED tests that were administered. 107 were first-time test takers. 66 were either retest or finishing a test. 123 passed compared to 32 that passed last year. Lila is here to answer any questions you might have, but she did put a note for me in here that said, "One of the reasons that we had so many more passing this year compared to last year is that the scores were lowered for the passing score, and the 58 candidates that would not have passed last year based on the score passed this year." So, I thought that was an interesting note, Lila. We also generated an additional $758 in revenue over last year's revenue for a total of $3,986. I'm sure the board will remember a few years back when we were getting tens of thousands of dollars. The reason we're not getting as much money anymore is because we are just administering the test. Pearson Vu is allowing us to administer the test, but we aren't the ones that are taking payment for the test. They're doing all of that. Lila, did I leave anything out?
Sounds good.
Great. Mr. Chairman, if there are no questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Dr. Eaton. Item number four is the consent agenda and reports. We trust that all the trustees have had the opportunity to look at the items that we have on there. Pretty straightforward. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and the reports there.
I'll move.
No second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. That sure makes things go a little bit quicker.
Yes, sir.
Item number five, consideration of possible action, is approval of the resolution by the Board of Directors of the Parker County Appraisal District to construct in addition to the current appraisal district office at a cost not to exceed $750,000. Andrew?
This time, they came to us about 33 weeks ago and are wanting to add on, I believe it's 3,500 square feet, to the central appraisal office. They need to basically have approval from all the entities that they do collect their taxes from. So, actually, this was supposed to be done by the end of August, and I called Larry and I said, "I don't think we're prepared to have a meeting before then," and he said, "Today would be fine if..."
End of July?
End of July, I'm sorry. And he said, "Today would be fine if we could get that approval this time." I don't know. I've not seen any plans. They're planning to go out. It says not to exceed $750,000, so I'm sure they'll be working on trying to keep that at a minimum, if they can. And I don't really have a lot more information on it than just that they're requesting to be able to go out and expand that building and cost not to exceed $750,000. Their collection will go up a little bit. If we had that for Weatherford College, $3,588.
What does that make our annual?
I think we're roughly $150,000, something like that right now. I'd have to check that for you, Frank, and I'll get back with you, but I know it's...
Their budget that's put out each year, and do we get the opportunity to approve that? I was trying to think.
No. We do not. They sent us a copy of it, but we don't have to approve it or anything. We don't have that opportunity. It's fit to us, really.
Well, it's my understanding...
I think it would be more, you know, we don't have an exact representative on that board because of our number of points that we have with them, but that board would approve that budget, the representatives from the county.
Okay, I've never seen one of their budgets.
Get you a copy?
I would like to get a copy and take a look at that and find out who does have the approval rights. I guess what I'm asking trustees is if there would be agreement to maybe table this to our next meeting. We'll have at least one more meeting in August. But I think we should get a copy of this and forward it to each of the trustees to take a look at, inasmuch as the appraisal district is, they serve us and all the other entities, as you can tell, in the county. And of course, the big ones are Alito and Weatherford, and Parker County are the big people. And I don't know whether they're on the board or not. But I would personally like to take a look at that and hold off on this a little bit. I just want to see their progress, see what their changes have been over the last year or two. I have to admit, I'm curious about their salaries. And I go back to thinking a little bit about the issue we had with the hospital district earlier this year. And at that time, I asked them to put together something on their webpage that would talk a little bit about the finances and things that are happening in their financial world. Never seen that. Now, I admit, I haven't followed up on it much, so...
They're just asking us for some remodel job. I mean, are they going to take offense to, I mean, is there something wrong with their salaries that we don't know about, or you don't know?
I just haven't ever seen any of it. You know, us as being, they're employers partially, a little bit, and you know me, I like to stick my nose in things sometimes.
I don't know. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, or we can approve that and still ask for that other information to take a look at. I'm open to discussion. That's why I was throwing it out here.
From my take on it, I don't know enough about how the appraisal district is funded. The project, when the building was built 13 years ago, is that something that's, all the taxing entities, are we paying for that now? I saw a note that it had already been paid off, so did they get funding from somebody other than us? I don't know enough about what happens. And I know what we see here for the college is an additional $3,600. From our standpoint, that's not that much.
Right.
However, I would also feel a bit more comfortable agreeing to that, knowing, since I'm being asked, you know, how does the money flow? I don't know. The construction cost seems a little high to me, but I've never built a government building, so...
I've even thought, and it doesn't necessarily have to slow this, because our annual piece would be 35, that is annual, isn't it?
Yes.
Our annual piece would be 3,500 bucks, 3,588. Maybe we invite somebody from, maybe we approve this or vote on it, and then invite somebody to come up from the district and give us an overview of their organizational setup, their financials.
I love that.
That'd be better.
So, we see what happens to the taxpayer.
And I will, I want to correct myself. When I went back, it is $200,000, or the tax collection fees at this time with the increases that we've had over the years. You know, he was asking that, you know, it needed to be approved, I mean, he needed to have bugs on it by last month. And I know he would be more than glad to come and discuss his budget for the coming year, which will be coming out this week.
So, that's a 1.5% increase?
Right.
Okay.
I don't want to...
I would vote on their remodel today if you wanted to, or they could come talk about the other stuff. They may be in a hurry on this, I don't know.
Yeah, if they want anybody in July, I'm sure they...
It's supposed to be.
Yeah.
And I do know that we don't have an actual vote on this. All that we have a vote is would be the contestants, I guess. We're not sitting on the board to approve the budget, but we do have the opportunity not to have to collect taxes.
Hey, I'm curious, do they board members get paid?
I don't think so.
I mean, I don't, I'm just curious.
I'm not sitting either to really, I have to go back to...
Have y'all been sending my check to the wrong address?
You're on the wrong board.
Yeah. If somebody else is getting paid, you're on the wrong board.
We are.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion then to approve the construction, to approve the resolution by the Board of Directors of the Parker County Appraisal District to construct in addition to the current appraisal district office at a cost not to exceed $750,000. I would entertain that motion.
I'll second it.
We're going to have a first.
Somebody's got to make it. I'll make it.
And I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Would you like for him to come to the next board meeting? I'd be glad to request that, y'all, when you have the next board meeting.
Yeah. I haven't voted yet.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to say aye. So, passes 3 to 2.
It's got to be this for someone else?
No, I thought it had to just be...
It has to be a... It has to be a terrible week. I'm here, it's 234.
True. Okay, that motion fails, and I would entertain a motion to table this or to bring it up again at the next meeting.
Also move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor of that one?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's cool.
All right. Did you, are you opposed to that?
No, I'm not opposed to it.
Okay. You're saying aye.
Yeah, I'm all in favor.
That passes unanimously. So, would you ask them to think about having somebody come up and talk to us?
Definitely.
Present to us their organization chart and...
Explain the process.
Yeah. Okay. Moving right along. Item number six is consideration of possible action, proposing to adopt the 2016 M. law of tax rate of .12019, which is broke out for maintenance and operations by, for maintenance and operations, .11376, and debt service of .00643. And that approval would be... Are we going to vote on that right now?
You have to vote to propose that way.
Vote to propose it, okay. On the 26th, which would be the official adoption. Okay. So, with that, Andrew?
I would like to discuss a little bit where we are on the effective, the tax valuations, of course, went down this time, and that's what causes an effective tax rate to go up in order to collect what you collected last year. So, basically, though, what we did in order not to increase any more than what we did, our debt service has gone down since we refinanced the bond, the 2007 bond in June that we had a savings of $4,900. So, it allowed us to come under on that. So, our total rate does not meet the total effective rate. So, we're still under that effective rate, but the portion of the maintenance and operation is the effective maintenance and operation rate. But the total rate is under the effective still. So, that would have, if we had gone to the total effective of 12.08, let's see, 12.876, it would have brought us in about $68,000 more. But we did not need it in the debt service account, so I chose to just go up what we needed in the maintenance and operations. Your decision, if you wanted to go up more because we still, but doing so, we're under the effective rate, so we don't have to go to hearings, which is always a good thing. And if you have any difference in thought on that, I'd be glad to entertain that. I know that will allow us to generate more dollars for this coming year. I believe it was right at 320, 309,80, it would be generated in tax revenue over actual dollars collected in 2015, '16, our actual estimated dollars at this time.
We also wanted to remind the board, we have not increased the tuition rate for three consecutive years. Our students are paying the same thing next year that they were paying two years ago. We've tried not to pass on the cost to our students. If we were to increase, let's say, $2, that would have been a $60 increase for our students. For somebody living in a $150,000 house, going to the effective rate is going to be about a $9 increase annually for them. So, 83 cents, I believe it worked out to 83 cents a month. And I kind of, you know, feel like I, as a taxpayer, would rather pay 83 additional cents a month than ask our students to pay additional $60.
So, what we've got is the appraisal, the appraisal slipped down, and we know that a lot of that is because of the mineral industry reductions in the county. Another one, did you talk a little bit about the state? You've had some previous indications?
The state, I'll, indications from the state are not good for the next biennial legislatureal meeting spring. And I know they always say that, Trev, because he's written that. But it makes a lot of sense. The oil and gas revenue are down, and we all know that. And sales tax are also down, probably because a lot of the oil and gas. So, it's, they're seeing the blues down in Austin. But also, on the other side, with the state audit that was completed this spring, we have chosen to take that, to pay that back, $344,000 a year over 48 months, I believe. So, we know right off the top, $344,000 are going to come up next year and for the following three years, three and a half years. Also, with that state audit, we're struggling right now to regroup any contact hours from what the rulings they came down on us and that we cannot count classes if we're not paying the teacher, and also if we are not collecting fees right now. So, that has pulled out a lot of our contact hours, so we know contact hours are going to be drastically down. They're trying just as fast as they can to rejuvenate. They had a great meeting, the workforce had a great meeting yesterday down at the Fine Arts, inviting every counselor in our surrounding area up here to explain what they need because they're saying now, okay, if you will have credit, this done in credit classes, you can count them. But in doing so, when you allow 14 and 15-year-olds into those classes, it's very difficult to get them registered in advance. So, what they're trying to do is work with these counselors to educate them on what they need these students to be doing in advance before they decide they want to take a college course, which we, Monday, all day long, I know the business office got calls, and I got hit with it Tuesday morning, nobody knows what we're doing, you know? And the students, and we keep telling them, well, you know, when you go to college, you have to know these things. But I said, "Well, wait just a minute. It's our job to educate those counselors." So, I was very excited yesterday that that took place down there. I do know they were very excited, the counselors were about it. They stayed like an hour and a half after the meeting, just talking amongst themselves. There was one school, Springtown, for example, said that in the dual-credit courses that they had, I don't know how many schools were doing dual credits in their high school right now, but they knew one thing from now on, Weatherford College was going to do all of them because they were so pleased that we were taking charge and going to show them the path of how to get those kids through. So, I think if we do more hands-on, but with that said, our in-contact year will be over in March of next year. So, we're right in the middle of it right now. We would like to have already generated a lot of hours this summer that we haven't. We also are going to lose a lot of our law enforcement classes because they were tuition-free. And so, it's really been a, if something could be reversed on that ruling down there, it would help us immensely, but we have no idea, even though other colleges are having difficulty, they've been fined anywhere from $2.4 to $3 million on it. We know of one of them, and some others are having the same problem, but they're not listening really.
Isn't South Texas College, it's...
That South Texas, I know Delmar had problems.
Legal ramifications.
Yeah, they're trying to get $3 million from them right now.
So, this is, but we are, workforce is trying their best to regroup and try to get those numbers back up. But with that said, appropriations, I feel like from all, every indication from our side and their side are going to be down unless, now, the TACC is asking for $1.8 billion in new money, but, you know, we ask every time whether they'll do it or not. I don't know. The state asks us to reduce 4% from our...
We're asking for more money. They're saying reduce 4%.
And I just submitted, I just, at noon today, I submitted our request for the next biennial. So, we discussed it a little bit in the administrative statement, what we were needing to do. If they want us to help them meet the 60 by 30 Texas new strategic plan that they have out there, we've got to have some help from them. And we, because, I know I was discussing with another chief financial officer a month or so ago. He said, he was discussing, working with his board and trying to explain to them, when we bring a budget to you all, pretty much this budget is balanced because we know what we have to do to balance. We go back and we massage it, and everybody in this room will tell you how many cuts are made off of their needs. And so, he said, "I'm thinking about starting to bring the budget almost one here, one here," saying, "This is what my needs really were." And he said, "There's nothing you can do to cut services when it's all said and done." You know, they're losing services. We're bringing balanced budgets to you, but right now, we're needing counselors, we're needing, you know, right now, to do the advising for the new success initiatives that are out there for us. We're needing, and I could let everyone in this room talk about it. And that's just the case. So, we're kind of behind the hayball when it comes, I brought a little bit, back in 2005, we've gotten increases from the state, but we've also, it went from $7 million to $8.9, which we won't, it'll be about $7.5 by the time we lose that, well, $700,000 off of it. So, $8.2 is what we have increased from the state since 2005. Our tax rate has gone from .11700. Last year, it was .11364, and we are finally asking to go above the 12 cents. We've got one of the lowest tax rates in the state. And so, we don't really have any other avenues to go to at this time because three years in a row, we've kept tuition in place because that's the biggest thing about accountability out there with the federal government and everybody else, that we're just charging the students or keeping them from going to college because their tuition has gone up so much.
How do we rank our tuition costs now?
Generally ranked...
We stay right at the average, and that's been our desire, you know, for a very long time. Now, Tarrant County is under us, but Tarrant County also brings in, you know, talking with the chief financial officer over there, he tells me, he said, you know, "This isn't even material to talk about, what state appropriations we get." They get so much money that it's less than 20% with them. They bring in about 18% of their total budget. So, they're not real concerned. But to the small and medium schools, this is a big thing with us. You know, we've got to have those state appropriations, even as small as they are when it's all said and done. What happened in 2012, 2013, to us losing half of our benefits, that was huge. That was a huge hit on us that I really don't foresee us ever getting back. So, we, you know, we're, they painted us in... But to the small and medium schools, this is a big thing with us. You know, we've got to have those state appropriations, even as small as they are when it's all said and done. What happened in 2012, 2013, to us losing half of our benefits, that was huge. That was a huge hit on us that I really don't foresee us ever getting back. So we, you know, we're, they painted us into a pretty bad picture. And ad valorem and evaluations have been good, and that's helped us along, and they're still, we're still getting a little bit more because we're still in a good area. But, you know, just like Wise County losing as much as they lost, I mean, it's difficult. It's very difficult. But, and we know, we know what new services we should be doing out there right now to make those students successful, to recruit students, all that, but we've just got minimal dollars to deal with. Any questions after our panel then? Ugly. I will tell you too, there's one other point I have been, it's been raised to me, and I've looked at and had a schedule done. Out of those tuition dollars that we bring in at the rate we set, we exempt 900, I believe it's, $968,000 a year for, most of them are required exemptions from the state. So we're not even getting all of that.
Is that why?
Senior Hazelwood, senior, well, we have a senior said it, there's a few of them that have been board adopted, but the largest have been the firefighters, the senior citizen Hazelwood, highest ranking students, tuition reduction, combat exemption, and all that. So we're not even getting those full dollars that we're telling y'all that we're charging for, so.
Well, I don't have any reason not to think we're going to continue to have these concerns from here on out. I think the oil and gas industry is, while it's still going to be a part, a big part of the state, I'm not so sure it's going to be as big as it was in the past. And there's a lot of people competing for these education dollars. Of course, the universities, the state universities get the big bucks. And we saw that when we were doing the construction stuff a couple of years ago, how we worked so hard to get our six or eight million dollars, other, some of the big ones are sitting there with almost a billion bucks in their construction fund. If there's no conversation or comments at the present time, I would entertain a motion to propose to adopt the 2016 ad valorem tax rate of .12019 cents. No, it's, let me just say, .12019 dollars would be broke out between maintenance and operations and debt services, so.
Before you ask for that motion, a little discussion, just to chase a squirrel here.
You bet.
On the other campuses, where are we sitting?
Okay, let me, can I shift a little bit? I've got a lot of paperwork, but I can answer your questions. Now, the education center in Mineral Wells, the education center in Granbury, those are education centers, they're not branch campuses. So all of those revenues go into our total budget. Now, we know, and Kevin may want to speak to these more than the negotiations that we've had with the communities out there, but everything we charge is built into our budget on that. So it's not as clear to see, there's a lot of needs out there. JC could tell you that Chiller went down Monday over there, we were able to get it repaired, but it's once again, it's one of those things, how long will that last? We know with Granbury, we don't know how long we're going to be able to keep that building.
They've been giving us information saying that they are working to allow us to stay in that building. They'd like us to be able to stay in that building. They're having a feasibility study drawn up right now to see what it needs to look like, but as of last week, they actually said that they want us to be able to stay in that building. So I'm very hopeful that they will just give us that building in the future. Now, we would have to come in and maintain the building. Right now, they are doing the maintenance on the building as well for us, but I think that'd be a small price to pay if, you know, they allow us to have the building. We have a meeting set up next week, Luke, that you're going to be part of, with some representatives from Mineral Wells, and they're talking about what we can do in Mineral Wells to maintain a presence locally there. We've had a lot of expenses. JC, I'm sure can address some of those with that building. We are not making money, we're not in the business to make money, but we've been, when you put our indirect costs on top of our other expenses, we've been losing quite a bit of money at that facility. We feel like the location is one of the things, the overhead to run a facility that's that old is another issue, but we're hoping that we can partner with the community and be able to get a new facility in a better location and hopefully be able to move forward with that. JC, do you want to address any of that?
I was just echoing what you said. Community is coming to the table, you know, open varieties. They have embraced 100% in the meeting with the board chair and the president in January, and again, you know, over a week and a half ago, their unanimous and their support. It's just the form that it takes, the mechanism, but they're on board with a different facility, you know, whether it's a new construction or remodel. And of course, where it would be located would drive then where the revenues would come from. But, you know, naturally, they have some questions, and they're going to bring them, they've asked me, and I've told them those are more appropriate for the board and for the president, and they're going to bring those when they have a sit-down. So they're coming to the table looking at all possibilities.
Back to Wise County, that's what I have the most of here. Wise County's budget is currently setting at $5,636,000. State appropriations, I'll tell you right now, $602,771 is what was budgeted this last year. Kevin and Frank and all that, we chose not when we had a reduction in state appropriations, knowing how they were struggling. We have not reduced Wise County by that amount, but their allocated amount. So their state appropriations have stayed the same. Tuition and fees, $1,192,000. Their local taxes are right now, I received an update last week that was roughly $200,000 more, but $2,831,000 is compared to $3,427, a $595,000 decrease.
On their, on their branch grant maintenance tax?
Yes, sir. For the year.
Is that solely, is that solely due to the drop in appraisal evaluation?
Yes.
And what is their, how much of their 5% possible?
They're recommending, what they are recommending is staying at the same rate of .4631, I believe. They're not going to decrease it, but they're not recommending that they'll increase it. And that's budgeted at 98% like they've always. Our, now, what we've tried to do for them is to go in and relook at those indirects. And we've cut that just about as low as possible. They're at 5% now, so $484,000 dropped from $846,000 last year. That makes the mandatory transfer at that $897,248. Now, we have a few more adjustments that might be made, but I think we're going to try to go and meet with them and discuss, okay, this is where we are, what, how would you recommend that we?
Does that eat into the $2 million?
Not to the $2 million, no. Our reserves, possibly, I asked this afternoon to get a new figure for Monday morning to go meet with them on what we estimate the expenditures to be this year. So when I say that, our, if we were to expend everything we had budgeted this year, we would be down to $3,220,767, taking the $2 million off of that, that's a million 220,000 that we've got left. So that's where we are.
And your meeting next week?
Monday with the judge?
Yes, sir.
Now, I think, you know, there's good efforts out there, and there could be on both sides, you know, more good negotiations to be made that we could possibly try to, you know, improve this budget.
I'm sure you will remind them what the Parker County folks pay in their taxes and that we're asking for a little bit more from them.
Anything else, Luke?
No, no.
Any of y'all have any other questions or comments? Okay, once again, would approve, I mean, sorry, entertain a motion that we proposed to adopt the 2016 ad valorem tax rate of .12019, broke out for .11376 dollars for maintenance and operations, and .00643 dollars for debt service on October 26, 2016. That would be the date that we actually make that proposal.
October or August?
August. I said October.
It's hard.
I'm not going to read that yet. August.
Just making sure.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, there are none?
And there will be a notice going out to the community. There was a notice of effective tax rate that ran on Tuesday, that they received all the information you all did on effective today. And then before the, a few days before the meeting, next time, there'll be a notice to the community and the Democrats.
All right, along the same lines, item number seven is the proposed 2016-17 budget report. You're still on, Amy?
Okay. The proposed budget is not, we have not made a lot of adjustments to it since I presented it in June. We are currently at 54,349,217. And last time, it was, it's a reduction of $118,000 since June. I guess I was looking at the past, and we, quickly before I came over here, I had listed a pull-up back in 2005, those figures I was giving you of where we were, whatever, our budget was 28 million then. So we have grown 89% without a lot of help from the state or anyone else. It's come off of our growth, our recruitment efforts, everything else, but our tuition dollars and our tax rate has not been increased. We've had growth in the community with the evaluations, but that's where the budget increases are. And I think we've done a very good job. Let me go over a little bit, I'm going to flip on my agenda page, and to remind y'all, because it has been June, and we forget things as we come into it. Our state appropriations have decreased by 344,000 due to the audit. The Parker County tax rate, and let me remind you that this next year is the second year of the biennium, so it'll be the next year when I foresee it getting really bad in the 2016-17, '17-18 year. Parker County tax rate has been increased from .11364 to .12019. There's being proposed to increase. There's no increase in overall tuition rates. In fact, the other day, when we were doing some adjustments, and very concerned about enrollments right now because they're not looking the greatest. So we did go ahead and decrease our tuition going into the year because as I was trying to balance the budget, there was about $200,000 there. I said, go ahead and reduce tuition projections because we are down. And if it comes back up, which we're in great hopes that it will, well, we can easily amend that budget back up and get that back in there. The Wise County, Wise County lease went up $62,844 to a total lease payment of $2,576,000. So they're bringing in $2,800,000 in tax revenue, and we're paying directly out $2,567,000 on that lease. So we're trying very hard. A 3% salary increase for all full-time employees totaling $474,107 is included. In that, we have an additional full-time classified position in the testing center that Lila's very pleased with, along with a temporary full-time instructional position in economics. Have a reduction in equipment, although, I think it's currently at $391,000, although we have the contingency of $300,000 that what we use that contingency for, I've told you before, but we are not replacing computers on a schedule in order to try to save funds in our budget. So what we do, we've been doing, and that's not always a happy thing for our technology director, but we are waiting till they're failing or about to fail before we replace. So in any other equipment is the same way. So we have requests to use that contingency money of $300,000. Now, I know this last six months, I have replaced lots of computers. We've got a lot of computers failing as they get older. The travel, we have an increase of $1,691. I know Kevin discussed with me this week, he said, Andrew, we may need more money when it's all said and done for trips to Austin this next year because with that legislating session, we're going to have to really stay on it. And we really did not, we didn't increase our budgets to do that, but it's going to be a necessary thing to go to those meetings and be heard. An increase in scholarships of $4,000. Last year, we had cut the cheerleading budget when we moved it over under athletics, basically in half. And they came to us and did request $4,000 of that back, but that was minimal as to what we've done for prior year, so that's in there. We have a reduction of $615,498 in operating grants, the top of three has run out, I believe, what did we say yesterday? But I do know, I talked with Kay yesterday, they're writing right now $2 million worth in grants that we're hoping to hear from right after the first of the school year. And that will help us tremendously, and that's a very exciting thing. Kevin, I don't know if you're ready to discuss what they're writing a grant for?
Well, they're trying to work, Charlie Gilchrist heard that there was a partnership with another college and an auto dealership to be able to get the Texas Workforce Commission to help train mechanics. And he came up here and talked to us about the possibility of doing that. We sent Kay Young over to talk to him from our workforce continuing education department, and she told him that that is exactly what we'd like to do. So they're working on a partnership between Charlie's dealership, which is Southwest Ford, and the college to get a grant through the Texas Workforce Commission where we can actually train their mechanics through Weatherford College funded by the Texas Workforce Commission. It would allow us to come in and buy equipment and things like that to assist them as well. So it'd be a great opportunity for all of us, and what we're hoping is that we could bring Jerry's in and, you know, do a partnership with them as well at the same time. So we think that would be great for the college and for our community.
And she said basically this could be used as a footprint for all over the, our service area, any other dealerships.
Talking about James Wood.
James Wood.
And Jerry's as well.
So, and I will say, we have very, Kay's department, we have very good reputation with the Texas Workforce. Anything she writes for, I mean, they call her and ask her to write for Brandon because they've done so well.
They've all been successful.
And they manage themselves well, so that's a good thing. Student aid decrease of $149,500, and that's pretty, most of that's set by the federal government and what they're going to allocate out. A decrease in plant operations and maintenance of $1,078,287 due to decreases in utilities and major repairs and rehabilitation. Luckily, last year, we had placed over $1 million, $1,200,000, I think it was, in major repair and rehabilitation when we got our increase in appropriations from the state. We got that figure such and like that, we really didn't have a lot of time for planning efforts. We were really waiting for this new strategic plan and all that to be able to allocate those major repairs out. We used, of course, some of it during this last year, making some renovations. I know we've done some things out the Carter property that have been very good for us, and we've
us and we've worked in just different areas. We go over in a couple of weeks to the gymnasium, we've got a new entry, a new flooring in the entry coming over there. We've done some things across campus and other facilities and, but this next year was when we were really going to use those dollars and that's when we lost those dollars from the state. It's when we, but luckily, it was there. And we've been able to save on utilities this year, they're down, some of the efforts we've done there, so it's gone pretty well. Now, I'll touch on just a little bit, the changes since June. Changes since June, we cut, decreased 57,000 for the appropriations because we had to pay two months back of $28,737 is our payback each month on the state appropriations. Tuition and fees have been reduced by $203,000 due to lower anticipated enrollment numbers and I mentioned that to you. Talking about Parker County Ad Valorem, tax revenues have been increased by $203,000 to reflect the increase in effective maintenance and operation rate. The Wise County grants tax has been increased since last time, 181,000. I mentioned that we got noticed last week, it's a little bit better. I think I said 200, it's 181. Necessary transfer from WCWC under strict reserves has decreased by the 202 and then debt service revenue has decreased by $40,900 once that bond was refinanced. We were able to cut that back and that's what kept us be able to keep that tax rate, the debt service portion lower. Changes in expenditures, mentioning that debt service pay, payment is lower. The WCWC salary fringe benefits expense decreased by 18,000. Those are adjustments made a lot of times for new hires. I mean, the people that we're hiring, sometimes they don't come in just at the advertised rate, so those are adjustments there. Benefit adjustments come up because of, they may not be taking a full family or they may be taking family and we estimated it a employee only. Instructional support budget was increased by 39,000 due to the tutoring software purchase this summer not anticipated to be received until August 31st. So, we had to put an increase there. The CIOC card budget was increased by 3,250 due to an increase in the fees charged by Herring Bank. And that CIOC card is our debit card for the college that we paid, put tuition fee payment out of and put it into. Associate degree nursing budget was increased by 11,310 due to an increase in the number of students allowed in the program. I think we increased that number, can't remember exactly by how much richer, but those numbers went up somewhat. The group health insurance benefit control account was decreased by 42,000. And we've talked about the control account, that was merely an adjustment out into other departments. It was not a real expenditure, but they were changed. Salary benefits adjustments have been made throughout the budget to reflect insurance and hiring adjustments resulting in a decrease of 65,920 and that made, that's a decision sometimes not to replace a position. WCWC contingency was decreased by 2,191 to bring the total contingency to 1% of the WCWC budget. And what we try to do here, what we try to do there is always to have a 1% contingency for any bills that come in that are higher, you know, during the year, to try to have a little safeguard built in there without having to come back to you all and transfer from reserves or whatever. And then the main campus contingency was decreased by 2,705 to bring the total contingent to 1% of the main campus budget. And those are basically what we've done to the budget since I reported to you in June. Are there any other questions I could help you with?
We'll get another look at this, when, the 26th?
26. And I will mention again, we always adopt the budget before we adopt the tax rate because we're required to do that because it has to be necessary in order to adopt that rate.
Come answer questions?
So, over the next, I'm going to say three to five years, it's pretty tight.
I'll definitely say the next biennium will be after the session next spring. I just, I don't see how it could not be, especially with our enrollments and our contact hour generation and coupled with the state's situation right now. And I don't think it's anything with good planning we can plan for and try to adjust, but just like when I was discussing with Frank yesterday, when, when you look at always wanting to keep the same tax rate, you've got to remember two years down the road, what if? And then we can't go more than the 8% increase without a potential rollback. So, but we've always got to keep that in mind. We always want to keep that rate as low as we can, but it's always out there.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Item number eight, future agenda items for meetings.
August 26th at noon, we will have our meeting for you to propose, actually accept and adopt the tax rate and the budget. So, we hope everyone can attend that meeting.
Okay.
Tricia, is that meeting in the boardroom? It will be in the boardroom. Chair, Dr. Dixon?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Item number nine, announce.
Okay, we've got our employee in service on August the 22nd, that's on Monday and board members are always invited to that. It's a good time because all the faculty are back, some of those have had the summer off and it's usually a lot of fun. And then, but it's not going to be as fun as Dr. Richard Bowers will have that afternoon. His retirement party will be August the 22nd.
Wow.
From 2:00 to 4:00 in Texas Hall in the Alkec Center and of course, we'd love for y'all to be there for that. First day of fall classes, August 24th, just a reminder, that is a Wednesday this year because of the Thanksgiving holiday and the way that kind of felt. And then Kathy Basham gets some fun on August the 30th is when her retirement party is going to be, 2 o'clock in the Alene Strain Room where we normally meet for board meetings. Love to have you there for that. Our foundation scholarship donor appreciation dinner, September the 1st, that's a Thursday night, a little bit earlier in the year than we've normally had it. You should have all received an invitation for that, love to have you there. I don't think you'll regret being there, it's really a great time. And then Labor Day holiday, September the 5th.
Okay, questions, comments? All right, take about a two-minute break and get into a closed session for some discussions with the college attorney.
That's the average.
Thank you very much for your attendance, as always. Okay, it is 3:25, we're back in open session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion? Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none? Thank you very much.